All right. This is the December 19th City of Des Moines Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. And these are our rules and procedures. Excuse me, the Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make a final decision on all matters before the Commission, other than site -- excuse me, site plans and subdivision plots. Unless denials or approvals are appealed, conditional approvals are appealed, please contact the City Clerk or the Community Development Staff for details on council hearings. Applicants are given 10 minutes to present their request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker being allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicants are then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the Commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or a member of the Commission requests that item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in the city government. Assisted listening devices are available for meetings in this room. To better serve you, please notify the City at least three business days in advance at 283-4209, should special accommodations be required. Plan and zoning commission meetings are broadcast on Media Cable Channel 7.1 or 7.2 for customers with that service. Transportation for the City of Des Moines meetings can be scheduled to and from Dart Central Station at 620 Cherry Street. To reserve your route, please call Dart on call scheduling at 283-8136. Calls for trips will be accepted up until 5:00 PM of the day prior to the meeting. Please be sure to mention in your request that you require transportation for the City of Des Moines meetings at this location. This notice is intended to comply with accessibility requirements of the Americans with Disability Act. Okay, we do have a quorum. And as far as the minutes of our last meeting, which was held December 5th, is there any action or motion? Thank you. All right, so it's been moved to approve the minutes of December 5th. Plan and zoning commission meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, are there anything would like to abstain?
So do we. So do I.
Okay, were there any names?
We'll have to wait until the next meeting.
Oh, here comes Emily.
There's one behind me. Traffic's really bad.
It's 5:05. I think we're fine.
Is your question because there are not enough to approve the minutes? Is that -- what would you suggest? We do it again? Should we do it again? Why don't we wait till -- we can do it at the end of the meeting, is that okay? Again. All right, so we have to return to the minutes. All right. I'm going to read what is on the item or on the consent agenda. Item number one is a request from Bridge District for review and approval of property located at 220 Maple Street. This will be a review and approval of preliminary plat to allow outlet C of Bridge District Plat 2 to be replatted as a development lot, and review and approval of a PUD development plan for level to allow development of a five-story, 121-unit, multiple-family dwelling with 53 indoor parking spaces and 153 surface off-street parking spaces. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes us to remove this item from the consent agenda? All right, sign that. Is there anyone on the Commission that wishes us to pull this item? Okay. Item number three, no, item number four, is my understanding that this item, which is a city-initiated request -- I said that's a public hearing. Item number four is a city-initiated request to vacate a segment of East 15th from East Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway to East Market Street in the vicinity of 200 Southeast 15th Street to assemble with adjoining city-owned property for redevelopment. So it's my understanding that the applicant is in agreement.
Well, so this was continued last time because of Hawkeye Land Company raising a number of issues about access.
And they weren't the applicant?
No, but they were a concerned party. They were just here this evening and are in agreement, so the entity that had issues with the previous consideration is now in support of the staff recommendations.
In agreement with the staff recommendations, okay. So based on that information, we could move this item to consent unless there is anyone in the audience that wishes to hear item number four. All right, sign that. Is there anyone on the Commission that would like to hear this item again? Okay, is there a motion to move this to consent?
I'll move. Is number five related?
We're going to talk -- oh.
That's Nick, she'll cover that one.
I have to do that separately?
Separately, okay, I'll move four to consent.
Thank you. All those in favor moving item number four to our consent agenda, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. That one will be on our consent agenda. Item number five is a city-initiated request to vacate a segment of East Market Street from East 14th, which I think is why it's different, to East 18th in the vicinity of 1605 East Market Street to assemble with the adjoining city-owned property for redevelopment. So on this item, there really isn't an applicant, correct?
So this is city-initiated as well, related to the same redevelopment. We didn't have any opposition, written opposition or any concern, so we left it on because we thought that there might be concern by the same party that was okay with the staff report on number four.
Okay. So at this time, is there anyone in the audience that wishes us to hear this item tonight, again, tonight? Sign that. Is there anyone on the Commission that wishes to hear this item again? Sign that. Is there a motion?
I'll move consent.
Thank you.
Move it to consent?
Yes.
All right, so the motion is to move item number five with the staff recommendations, as is, to our consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay. So that would make our consent agenda tonight, item number one, item number four, and item number five. Okay, so is there a motion for consent?
I'll move consent.
Thank you. All of those in favor of our consent agenda tonight, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, thank you. So our first -- oh, item number three, thank you. Item number three is a request, as you remember, it was continued from our November 21st meeting, the request from 2701 Ingersoll for review and approval of site plan, mill retail center under design guidelines, MPC Districts for Property at 2701 Ingersoll, to allow development of the property with a 5,250-square-foot commercial center. It's my understanding that they want to continue this item to our next meeting in Jan.
Yes, the developer is working diligently with the neighboring property owner on some concerns that are more between those two property owners, and so they would want to have additional time, so they've asked to have it continued to the January 16th.
Okay, and is the applicant with us tonight?
I don't see anybody here.
Okay, so they were based on --
Yeah, that actually came to us before the staff recommendation was written.
All right, is there anyone on the Commission that wishes to hear this tonight? And again, is there anyone in the public that wishes to hear this? All right, so is there a motion to continue this item?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor of continuing item number three to our January 16th meeting, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, thank you. So that leaves our public hearing items tonight, item number two and item number six. So we'll start with item number two. This is another item that was continued from our November 21st meeting. This is a request from Casey's Marketing Company for review and approval of property located at 3200 and 3212 Southwest 9th and 930 Park Avenue. And the item under consideration are rezoning property from C1 Neighborhood Retail Commercial District to R160, One Family Low Density Residential District to a PUD, and review and approval of the proposed Casey's General Store, 1192 -- Casey General Store, number 1192, for PUD conceptual plan to allow for redevelopment of the existing 21,664-square-foot general food sales store with a 4,817-square-foot gas station, convenience station, and to include seltzer wine beer in a pump island canopy with 14 fueling locations. Did that give you enough time?
Yes, madam chair. This item is being considered under the previous version of the ordinance. It was filed under the period of time where rezonings from PUD could be filed, so this is coming to you as a planned unit development rezoning, and it would carry forward if approved as a legacy PUD under the current ordinance. So I just wanted to point that out in terms of we're kind of in that transition timeframe, so I don't want anyone to get confused.
And when you say ordinance, you mean from the zoning code?
Correct, the zoning ordinance, yes. The property we're looking at is the southwest corner of Park Avenue and Southwest 9th Street. This is the Save-A-Lot store that's empty at the moment, and associated parking area. This is the building, and then as you sweep around towards the north, moving east. That would be the Park Avenue Elementary School. Since the last time this was in front of the Commission, Casey's and staff have worked together, they've actually resubmitted, so the document that was in your packet is a resubmitted from the previous hearing that this was brought up at. They -- staff has revised our staff recommendation in that period of time as well. I will kind of try to focus on the things that staff is recommending at this point. So Casey's has retained the building kind of at the center of this property, with the pump island out in the front, along Southwest 9th Street, parking into the building, some parking from the south. There would still be cross-access to the commercial center to the south. They're proposing two drive-access points. This is a ride-in, ride-out based on the traffic study that was conducted prior to the rezoning application. They would still have cross-access to be able to use the driveway onto Southwest 9th. They're proposing landscaping at the perimeters and a buffer at the west along the residential area. There would be open space behind the building, which would also have a dual purpose of providing stormwater management as part of the project. The project area is over two acres, so under the requirements for stormwater pollution prevention, they'll have to do a SWIP and meet all of our water quality provisions. I should point out that as a PUD now, under our new ordinance, this would come back to you with the development plan, so the actual final development plan would come back in front of this Commission and the City Council before it would be finally approved, based on the provision now for development plans and PUDs. Staff's primary concerns, we still are looking to make sure that this is a walkable project. It is in a neighborhood node at this corner in the Plan DSM, which contemplates more intensive use and more pedestrian interaction versus vehicular interaction, and so as part of that, we want to ensure that there's adequate scale of this project to the pedestrian environment. So as part of that, staff is recommending a few things under the staff recommendation that we believe would enhance that development, being in a node. We would want all the site lighting directed downward. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing here. We would want a reduction of the canopy height to ensure that it complies with the design guideline. Now, one of the things that they're working on right now, and they haven't given us the final concept, but they've indicated with that copy that was in the staff package as an example, that they are wanting to come back with a design that articulates. So as per Will's question the last time, I think there will be a portion of that that will -- would bump up above that max height, but in essence, the main, staff wants to keep the main part of the canopy within that design guideline. And again, they're indicating their willingness to redesign it with the articulation feature. We haven't actually seen that, so we would want that to the satisfaction of the planning We want a provision that shows the compliance with our freestanding overlay provisions that were in the code at the time of the application. If you look at these, you see we have some directory signage that actually supports the commercial center that would be within the PUD. We believe that probably needs to be redesigned if it's going to remain in the PUD. It would cause this sign to go away, that Casey's wouldn't directly use that sign. They're not proposing it at this time. They're showing ground mounted signage in their submittal that you would have had in your package. We want to make sure that those freestanding signs would comply with those freestanding overlay district provisions. We want to add a note that indicates that the overhead electrical utility service lines will be placed underground. With a brand-new building and everything, they're going to be running new services to this. I think they're going to have to pull it from across the street, and that would, in all likelihood, take it under the street at some point, just so you understand that. We do want to have Class A sidewalks on the perimeter of the development, again, making that walkable environment along the edges, street edges here. And they're showing connections to get to the sidewalk system, which are important to link entrance to the building, but we also think that the general traffic in the node would benefit then from also having that pedestrian streetscape along Southwest 9th and Park Avenue. In addition to that, to enhance that, we would want the decorative fencing in the perimeter lot areas along that streetscape on the private side of the property, where you see the tree plantings and the shrub plantings. They're proposing it already with their resubmittal. We'd want it on both street sides. And then the last provision we would seek is to have bicycle racks and outdoor seating areas within the sidewalk area in front of the building in an area around the entrance. We've seen this recently with approvals of the QuickTrip projects where they've tried to bring that, draw that store towards the pedestrian environment, that you have seating and bicycle parking areas that would benefit other modes besides the vehicular mode, the motor vehicle mode of transportation for use of that store. So that would be the last provision. We think that's achievable, that might shift the building west a little bit to get more depth on that sidewalk area up front of the building in the final design of it, but we think the east-west dimension gives enough to be able to do that. I passed around the cards. There was also some support letters from businesses along the Southwest 9th corridor that were included in that, in addition to the response cards that came from the properties around the subject property. So you're looking at, there's a couple of objections, but most of the responses were positive about the project. There's nothing that would trigger any type of supermajority of the City Council vote in this case, so the opposition is limited to 2.3%. Are there any questions about the staff report?
Mike.
Any questions?
I have a question. Eric, thank you for the business with the canopy. I have a question about the monument sign and the freestanding sign overlay district provisions. In the provisions, do they talk about digital lighting and monument signs?
They do, yes, they do.
And what do they allow?
So they limit the amount of the scale of the electronic component as part of the sign. So that could affect what's being proposed here.
That was what I was --
Yeah. So the scale of this sign --
It's 27 feet tall.
Yeah, it's a pretty tall sign. If we allow up to 15 feet in height, generally, this is being shown at 13, which should generally be okay. The base would need to be a little taller to meet the 25% of the height to make that work, and some of the electronic components would have to be, I believe that would max out at 24 square feet total, so they may have to shrink up the electronic components a little bit to make that, to make that work. If they wanted that sign to, under the freestanding overlay provisions, to be that height, they would pull it back from the street at least 25 feet. If they wanted it closer, right up to the street at the property line, they would need to reduce the total height of the sign to eight feet in height.
And then I have another -- thank you for that answer. The other question is, I've noticed one convenience store here in the city now has one or more digital signs integrated in the canopy. It's, to my eye, it's distracting and it's dangerous. Has that been regulated?
I'm not, I guess I'm not familiar with what you're referring to, but --
I'll talk with you.
Right now, the electronic signs are limited, new electronic signs would be limited to being only on a monument sign, so I don't believe there's any provision allowing them on the canopy.
I'm glad to hear that, but there is an example in the city.
In the city or in the metro?
The city.
Okay.
Earl High Road.
Any other questions, Eric? And I know you have one, Mike, I just wanted to make sure I understood. In the staff report, it says that the proposed PUD plan would reflect compliance in everything that you've listed in the notes, but the staff would recommend that alcohol, liquor not be permitted with the PUD.
Right, they withdrew the proposal to do that, so that was actually modified in there.
Okay, because that was one concern that we saw.
That was presented last time, correct.
Right, okay, thank you.
So Eric, just to double check, on the agenda, it said it references 930 Park Avenue, and if I recall, in the revised site plan that came in from the applicant, they removed 930 from the rezoning boundary?
Yes, the notices went out with the full property, so when this goes to the Council, they have reduced the PUD area, and I'll show you with the, with the plan that they submitted just before the staff packet went out. So when you look at, if you want to look at for comparison's sake, the golden boundary here, included area right here, so this has been shrunk back to follow what you see right here, more of a square.
So Eric, if you could go back to the map, had the yellow line on it?
Yes.
Just real quick, I think that's easier to show it. So the, right, oh, you just had it. That blue line right there is basically the western edge of the rezoning now?
Yeah.
It comes to the corner of the building to the south and then runs along the yellow line?
Yeah, it's hard to see, there's actually a parcel boundary right here that would have been extended to the blue line, and then, you know, it's essentially made up of two existing parcels now.
So Eric, there would still need to be a So Eric, there would still need to be a, is that, is that map showing that it's still low density up on the north edge of the store?
So, actually, I think they would now only have to amend this little piece at the top, right here?
Yes.
So this would, this would no longer need to be amended in the Plan DSM or this piece right here, so.
So we'll correct those maps for council?
Yeah.
But it would just be that northern portion for the land use plan amendment, and then that reduced boundary for the PUD boundary?
Right. And since we didn't re-notify them, we, in order to report the responses and everything, the maps were kept for the tonight's hearing based on the way they were notified, so.
And because the boundary is now less, we're okay with going with a lesser PUD boundary? If it was larger, we would have had to continue this and resend out notices again?
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, Singnan, is the applicant present?
Anything you need to leave up here?
I believe it's the site plan.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, Doug Beach, legal counsel for Casey's General Stores, 729 Northeast Brookhaven Ankeny, Iowa. Thank you for the meeting tonight. We're excited to be here, build another new store in the city of Des Moines. Here with us too is the members of the Tersey family, represented by Chris Tersey and our engineer here. This property's been in the Tersey family, they tell me, since the early 60s. I thought maybe Bobby would be here and bring you a little Latin King, and if not, I'd have brought the pizza, I guess. So we're excited about that. We're excited to build a store in this location. As you know, the grocery store now is closed, and we are hopeful to keep some economic vitality in this part of town, thankful to have support of all the neighborhood associations and the tenants next door. So we're excited about the project. Want to thank Mike and his staff for working with us. Had a couple of meetings, and we think we've got all the issues pretty well ironed out. We are still working on our canopy design, but it will have an articulation that they have talked about. So we are in agreement with the recommendations to staff, and would ask that you follow staff recommendation and pass it as is. Excited about that, and I'll be open for questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I do. I'm sorry, I'm not clear. Are you using the, are you using the Save-A-Lot, are you repurposing the Save-A-Lot building?
No, we're going to demolish it.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Okay, Singnan, is there anyone in the audience who has concerns or is opposed? Okay, Singnan, at this time, you can come back, but there's nothing to rebut. I do have one, I just wanted to ask one question, and that is that there is an elementary school across the street, and I know, in full disclosure, my children attended that elementary school, and at various times, because they had limited parking, I know they have a little more parking now, but at various times, parents were allowed to park there when they picked up youngsters. Is that going to continue, or, and it was at the generosity of the Tersey family?
I don't, if there's room, I think we always like to have patrons on the lot. So yeah, we're not going to kick anybody out at that point, too. I know Chris's group over there's got a little limited parking for the strip center, but for, you know, 15, 20 minutes during the day, two times a day, I don't think that's going to be a concern. So yeah, we always encourage people to park on our lots and hopefully come in and get a little something while they're waiting.
It's a win-win for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. All right, then at this time, our closing public hearing.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I have a question to Mike and Eric, and so I guess I thought we were really looking, we were working towards pedestrian-friendly, and I thought we were moving our buildings up front and putting all those gas pumps and everything back behind and building those corridors of businesses. And so I wondered, was that a consideration in this project?
It was certainly a consideration. That was kind of a starting point for staff when we started working with this. After working with the Southwest 9th business group to confirm that they were willing to accept the pumps along Southwest 9th, rather than maybe the building up at the corner with the long edge of the building along Park Avenue and the pumps to the south, the Southwest 9th group was satisfied with the design with the pedestrian enhancements that we were getting and not having the building at the corner. And then there were also concerns from the Tersey family about conflicting provisions between the parking areas for their strip center and access into their, so, for example, the gas underground tanks were moved up to the, to the corner. They were going to have to be closer to the Tersey strip center in another arrangement, and that was going to potentially be blocking some of their access to their parking on their strip center. So after all those meetings, I think they alluded to it, we met with them twice since the last time I saw them on the agenda, and came to a mutually agreeable layout for this site specifically. Under the new code, Type 1 reviews would be requiring that to be out at the street. Otherwise, they'd be coming to the planning commission for review.
One of the things that we looked at was the Southwest 9th corridor plan that was adopted, too, that had contemplated redevelopment of this particular site, not with a convenience store, but with a revised configuration for the large box, and it was still bringing the project to about this same point that Casey's is proposing, so that weighed into that review as well, the Southwest 9th corridor plan.
There was still going to be parking between the building and Southwest 9th under the other, under their concept that they drew for the order.
Any other questions?
Down here.
I'll move staff.
Thank you. All right, the motion is to move staff recommendations, 1 through 7 included, correct? You good with 1 through 7? All those in favor, please signify by stating, or raising your hand. All right, thank you very much, and thank you. All right, so at this time, we're ready for our final item tonight, which is item number 6. This is a request from Confluence Brewery Company for appeal of an administratively denied site plan. Confluence Brewery Grain Silos and Site Improvements on property located at 1235 Thomas Beck Road to allow new outdoor grain silos, off-street parking, and landscaping without installation of a public sidewalk.
And you should have a copy of the submitted site plan that was denied by staff under open mercy revealed for Confluence Brewing site just south of Graves Lake along Thomas Beck Road. Parcel is kind of an odd shape here along the north side of Thomas Beck. The building in question is right here. There's actually a property line that kind of runs this way through the center of the building. The parking area that's in question that they're looking to improve is out front. So what that involved was a site plan submittal in order to do those improvements, and at the time of submittal, the city staff then recommended that a sidewalk be put into place along the, probably right away as part of that. So they would be reconfiguring the one-way angle parking configuration to improve the parking situation there. If you look at the way it's currently, that's the entrance, kind of this, it's not paved in this area between Thomas Beck and their parking lot. This ground area, that's the area they're generally looking to improve and enhance their front door. This gives you maybe a little bit better view down the street. So this also came about with a project, as part of the project, they were looking to add some silos to the operation of the building. This is in a industrial district that allows for that, those silos to be incorporated as long as they meet building height and stay out of the setbacks. They're looking to tuck those up against the building into their, around their loading area, so this would be where trucks would come in, load barley and hops into the silos, and then they would process into the building into their production area. So that's another piece of the project that was part of the site plan. It's really not something that's non-compliant. What was non-compliant is that they wanted to waive the sidewalk, public sidewalk installation requirement, so that's really the matter that's in front of the commission tonight, but the commission is having to approve the site plan as a whole as well, so. So staff recommends that we deny, that the commission deny the request to waive the required five-foot-wide sidewalk along Thomas Beck Road along, as part of the site improvements, and then however should the commission be inclined to grant the relief of, or waiver of that sidewalk, staff recommends that the balance of the site plan be in compliance with all administrative review comments of the city's permit and development center. Any questions?
Questions? Yeah, Carolyn?
So Eric, where, do they have connecting sidewalks? Is it building upon an existing sidewalk?
Well, they're, they're improving that area, they're creating that perimeter as part of this. In fact, they vacated some portion of Thomas Beck in order to extend that out to make the geometry of their parking function. Honestly, they won't connect anything right now, so this is really as implementation of the Move DSM Complete Streets policy that the city council has taken on, where they've set all priority 1 and 2 streets require sidewalk, and so we've held to that, and then it would be the commission's consideration in order to waive them, so.
Okay, thank you. Good question. Any other questions for Eric?
Yeah, Eric, following up, on Thomas Beck, are there any sidewalks?
Not in the immediate area.
I mean, how far do you have to go to find one?
There's, they would pick up at Flure for sure.
Yeah, we're building some up there.
There's one along Thomas Beck from Flure.
No, I think he means in front.
There's some on the north side of Thomas Beck, east of Flure. But not, they don't run much further than the, they don't get past the Massey Ferguson properties or plants.
Some of us know what you're talking about when you say Massey Ferguson.
Eric, there is a bike trail behind it, though, right?
So there's, yeah, there's a trail network that's within Graves Lake. So there's some opportunity, there's some opportunity to move, you know, from the front of the building. They actually have their backside patio area has a connection directly onto the recreational trail system.
So that trail comes up to Thomas Beck, just to the west of that building that is to the west of Confluence, no, west, you're pointing east.
Sorry, so you're saying, so you can see the trail system up there?
Right, and so just off that side of the paper to the west of that...
Over here?
Yeah, it comes up to Thomas Beck. You can sort of see it on here when it comes...
You're talking about this little connection right here?
Yeah, that's where it comes up to Thomas Beck.
Eric, I have a question generally. What's the plan for sidewalks? It seems to me that it's helter-skelter. We, there aren't any sidewalks you can acquire, one property owner would have them, and it's silent on the others. Is there a general plan that you, if you're going to require one to have it, if words the plan include the others on the sidewalks so they have adjacent sidewalks that connect?
So the complete streets policy is the plan, and it lays out all the Priority 1 and Priority 2 street network within the city, and it asks that as part of any site planning process that we begin to require the sidewalks to fill the gaps in that system. So that all came through the Move DSM Complete Streets initiative that came through the commission actually about a year ago, so.
So if property does not have a site plan, then they are basically exempt from putting in a sidewalk?
They're not necessarily exempt. There's nothing triggering them to put it in directly, but...
I know that, but that's obvious.
Yeah, so it is triggered by development. The other piece of that is that the council has programmed projects throughout the city to start putting sidewalk in on priority, you know, the highest priority areas to get the, fill those gaps. So there's going to be an ongoing commitment on the part of the council to eventually complete the network of streets without sidewalks.
Okay, thank you.
Jack?
So I think what's happening here on this map that has been pointed out that there is a connection from Thomas Beck to the bike walk trail to the north.
To the west of this property.
Right. So does that connect sidewalk and get to Flure? Front of the Massey Ferguson?
You would have to, I would have to, I could verify that.
I don't think it does, does it.
Can you pull up the city maps on the computer? I don't know if that's...
Yeah, the newest aerials are not on here, so if it was a recent project.
The reason I ask is that if that's true, the effect is to just route the sidewalk behind the property as is.
Eric, just to confirm, the staff recommendation is to follow the council's policy on not waiving sidewalks on Priority 1 and Priority 2 streets, correct?
Correct, yeah. We're recommending that we uphold, you know, our administrative denial, the requested waiver of the installation of public sidewalks.
So I get that. I'm just proposing that maybe the practical presentation we have here is that it already in effect loops around the backside of the building instead of playing with the traffic on Thomas Beck in the front side of the building, which might not even be the front side of the building the way the building's used with the beer garden on the Graves Lake side and bicycle access and pedestrian access coming in from that side. It's just an observation of what might be the situation if we have a little more map, and the neighbors might know for sure, and the applicant may know as well.
Well, Jack, I've gone there about half dozen times. I always go off Thomas Beck. I've never approached it from the trail.
And I only approach it from the trail.
And I'll go either way.
Shapeshifter.
And they also, am I correct, didn't they close that, no, that's further down, the off-street parking that you used to be able to park to the east of that building, no, yeah, to the east of the building to get into the Graves Lake, but that is no longer available for parking, right? Oh, that's my expert here, don't worry.
It's not there.
Yeah, it's not there anymore. So Jack, maybe while he's looking, is your question, is this, why is this a priority one or priority two street?
No.
Oh, that was, okay.
So if I could get Tyler to, it does come around the Massey Ferguson property, if I could. Is it not hooked up?
Is it plugged in? Is the cord plugged into the laptop there on the cable?
Yeah, I'm looking for that.
So we've, we've entertained conversations like this before where it's like, hey, when we finally do have another person that is going to develop there, go ahead and put a sidewalk in? But my motion would be to not.
But I think I know where you're going.
Yeah, can we have that conversation?
Would you like us to go ahead and listen to the applicant while you get that?
Oh, of course.
I'm not, the cord is plugged in, so I'm not sure what's going wrong.
So let's hear, let's hear from the applicant, and maybe you can answer some of the questions that have been raised.
Can we have the applicant?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'm Brad Kiel with Bishop Engineering, 3501 North 104th Street in Urbendale. Here tonight with John Martin with Confluence Brewery and Rob Pomerantz with the ownership of the building. You guys are already taking away so hard of my presentation, so I appreciate the discussion you're having already. You may have received a letter from us, kind of a, this is, we understood is our avenue to come here and appeal sidewalks now, it's not part of the labor process with staff. We understand through council, it's directive to staff to, in areas of immediate need or a definite need or sidewalks that are already adjacent to a property, to look into, you know, adding sidewalks. I guess, you know, in my first point on the letter, we don't feel that this is an area of immediate need, it's an industrial area. You've already had the discussion about the trail that goes around the building, which we know comes from Flure of Thomas Beck and then goes around to the north into Gray's Lake and all kinds of network of trails, and then back around to the east, kind of off Thomas Beck and then continues on. Nothing on the other side of the road, where there's a lot of trees and a few properties undeveloped, of course, but even McCray Park doesn't have sidewalk along the street that goes up through there. And I've, I've kind of been investigating the residential area to, you know, Lincoln area, high school, there's maybe more of immediate need of sidewalk up in there, because there is segmented areas of no sidewalk, but we just feel that it's not appropriate here. One thing that I might be misunderstanding, and I know that when we talked, we've been kind of at this for a while, because our first goal was to do the grayed silos, and then we were doing some improvements, or at least defining the parking better for the parking out front, is that the sidewalk was going to be required from, yeah, this end of the property all the way to this end of the property. And in doing that, if that was the case, we're going to be crossing eight driveways where there's truck traffic, and that's not desired either. And obviously, it's, that's quite a distance, 1,100 feet of sidewalk to put in just for a project that we're really just focused on right here. And it's, like I said, as part of that project, we're, we did acquire a little bit of right of way just so we could pull the parking back off. We are doing some angle parking so we can pull back off, because right now cars are parking up near the Thomas Beck, and this will give us some more safe distance and actually provide some landscaping. But then the request was to add a sidewalk there also, so we didn't know for sure if that was just going to be this area that they're requiring, or it's all, you know, we understood it was going to be the whole distance. So, I mean, that's another discussion, but obviously our, our first response is that we, we are respectfully appealing the sidewalk in this area, period. We feel that there is adequate access around people that are going to do any walking or biking, or are they're going to take the Gray's Lake trail system and, and get to the patio area on the north side of the building, so. I think I had some other improvements in there, but I'll leave it at that, if you have any questions from me or John or Rob, I'd be happy to do so.
All right, so questions? Jack, did you still have your question about?
No, I'm just musing about how the north-south corridor between Thomas Beck and the Gray's Lake trail was probably put in there by the city and could have gone along Thomas Beck if they chose in front of Pomerantz Building and then taken a dive toward the trail where it was a shorter distance, but they didn't, it's just.
I think the north-south connection is closer to the residential to the west, so closer access was into Gray's Lake.
I'm going to try to swing it around.
Nice keyboard. Jack, what about your trusty global map that he always finds? Oh, that's why. Does he know how to get it on my phone?
She's offering you her phone.
So this is a property in question right here, this is that north-south piece, and it connects to Thomas Beck, which then follows the north side to, all the way down to Flure, and it connects here. There's a project underway right now on Flure that will get pedestrian sidewalks and trail going north as well, so. That's all under construction right now, so. So there is, you know, some connectivity not, not far off. If the building to the west were to do a project, we would ask the same, same process.
So Eric, could you clarify what limits we're asking for sidewalk in front of?
Typically, it's the parcel, I think some of their parking improvement is over here in this area. So it would, it would be along this stretch, you know, the commission could waive a portion of it, I suppose. We're recommending that it be placed along the parcel, there's parking that serves the, the premise that's, you know, over here, over by the, the truck area, but I'll let them.
Yeah, and just to follow up on that, the only improvements we're doing there is adding landscaping, so as part of this project, we are adding some significant landscaping around the site, which we have no problem with, but, so we're not doing any improvements over that side of the site. The major improvements for parking is just right in front of the building at 1235 Thomas Beck.
So Brad?
Yes.
I think I just heard Eric say that the sidewalks required in front of the Confluence piece of this property, is that what you heard him say? Or did he say it was 1,100 feet as you feared?
It's probably about that long, yeah.
1,100 feet?
Well, that, that's from.
The whole Pomerantz property?
The whole Pomerantz property, right. Because right now it's owned by just.
Yeah, so.
So, so all I'm trying to figure out is whether we're talking about 300 feet or 1,100 feet?
Well, we'd recommend it for the whole parcel, the site is the parcel. I understand that they're working for a tenant project, but it goes with the building.
Eric, is 1,100 feet just in front of Confluence, or is 1,100 feet entire length? Keep going.
1,100 would be this.
It's actually the entire length, it's, it's the whole building.
It's not the adjoining building that you're not in?
It does include the joint, my, the 1,100 feet is the whole building, does not include the driveways, but there are eight of them.
Eric, can you point to that on the screen so we can clarify?
I'm not sure what he's talking about.
Well, I'm tied, my understanding was that we were looking at the whole frontage, 1235 and 1401.
It's this parcel right here. There's improvements over here in this corner, there's improvements in front of the building here, so it would certainly include this parcel.
So it's less than 1,100 feet is what I'm getting at? It'd probably be about half of that based on this, correct?
So here's a fundamental question. Do we know how many feet of sidewalk you're asking the applicant to have, or the applicant is appealing away from? I haven't figured that out yet. I've heard that the length of the property is 1,100 feet or long, shall we say. I know, and we all know, because we've probably, most of us been there, that the Confluence property sits right in the middle of this darn thing, and the parking lot improvement they're talking about is right in the middle of the Pomerantz property, so it's going to be a substantially lesser piece than the whole tract. My concern is, right now, unless somebody clears it up for me, that we're being asked to answer a question on appeal here about a length of sidewalk that the city staff isn't even sure about, based upon what I've heard so far.
It's probably about 600 feet. I'm just a little measuring tool, it's hard to see. Again, the building and the parking work together to meet the site requirements. They're making modifications in this area and then along the front, so.
So again, their site plan boundary limit is what we asked for sidewalk to be along. The 1,100 has been quoted by the applicant at the podium.
We're not requiring it on this part of the building, that's a separate parcel.
Well, that clarifies part of it. Thank you, Eric.
Madam Chairman, councilors, Rob Pomerantz for the owners of First Midwest of Iowa Corporation and our tenant, Confluence Brewery. We've owned this property, our family, since 1954, and I live just a short few blocks away. I'm so familiar with the South Des Moines area, the preceding Tersi project, know it very well. We, we, in looking at this project, it's, it's a fairly fast-moving street, it's been a truck-traffic street for 65 years, we have not needed a sidewalk on this property. In 2012, our family, the owners of the property, gave to the city the egress to the bike path, which is, connects up just to the east, which is on the Massey Ferguson project, and goes back and goes around. There have been other projects that have happened on Thomas Beck Road. You had a new, a complete new pavement of the street and new water, underground pipage and what have you. At that time, it might have been a good opportunity to put the sidewalk in, but it was not done. And all we're saying is, this is a duplication in a lot of ways, having a sidewalk that's going to bring pedestrians close to a fast-moving street that has, that has a lot of semis and service trucks for Confluence Brewery, not to mention we have three other tenants involved in this property who are, have big, big heavy equipment and what have you on the property. I recognize that there's city ordinances that are now put out and directives and what have you, but there are eight openings going down the property from where our ownership starts to the end of our ownership, and if, and if the site plan is approved for them to make their changes, we will lose one of those openings forever, and we know that. That's, that's not a problem. We have a wonderful tenant here, they've developed a great business in a short period of time, and we have three other really good tenants on that property. I, I implore you to not duplicate services and put this path on Thomas Beck Road. I, again, I would tell you, this was 1954 that the building was built, I've spent so many hours in my life down there, and if you put someone on a daily basis down there to just take a look at the, the traffic on a walking basis, coming east to west, west to east, I'll bet there aren't five people that go either way. I don't think that necessitates where you can go and spend, and I've walked it, less than three minutes to go out and around on the backside and be safe and be away from the street. Do you have any questions? I'm here to, to stand up not only for our business, for First Midwest, but for my client, who's an excellent client and a, been a great business partner for us.
I don't see any questions, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the request to overturn the denial? Could you please come to the mic, sir? And we do need your name and address.
My name's Spencer Burton, 4324 Forest Avenue. To me, it seemed like a big waste of money, the applicant's money. Nobody's going to walk along that street, it's not a pedestrian boulevard, and why require somebody to do something, there's just a big waste of money. I mean, why do it? Just because city ordinance? That's my, my quick comment.
Thank you for sharing. Anyone else who wishes to speak in support of the request to overturn the denial? Please come forth, sir.
My name is Frank Scaglione, and I've owned Thomas Beck Road for probably.
And may we have your address too, sir?
Pardon?
Did you get his name?
Frank Scaglione.
Thank you, and address.
S-C-A-G-L-I-O-N-E.
Thank you.
Okay. I've owned Thomas Beck Road now for about 40 years, and I've bought little pieces of the property of, it's 1350, and I'm right across the street from the, from the warehouse there, and I've been there, and I know that they do a good job, and, and the only thing I'm here for is, we have, have that property for sale, the property that I have, and I have eight acres there at the, at Thomas Beck Road across the street from the Pomerantz and the Confluence. On the south part of that property, it used to go south, there's a street called River Vista, it's right up behind there. It comes off of Lincoln High School where the football field is, it's been there a long time. I have a house up there, a ranch, it's a beautiful home, and also has five acres of property up there. We have put it up for sale with Iowa Realty Company. We have numerous developed people that are building homes and have a lot of inquiries on the property to join Thomas Beck Road and also River Vista Drive. The thing that I kind of would like to find out is that the developers, seeing the silos that's going to be there, it kind of made a surprise to me that I thought that they would put silos out like that. I'm really not complaining about something of that because of the view. Our property is high, the only thing I can do is just pass this over to you and show you that what we did with the drone, okay? The only thing it's going to show you is all the trees and everything, and it's going to show you the house right here, that's what we're facing with.
We might be able to, yeah, put it on the overhead.
Well, it's hard to see because of the computer.
Can you take the computer out? We need the map.
No, but once I move it, it'll be a lot much harder to put back.
Okay.
That's all right.
That's their house.
That's a cool house.
Yeah, it's gorgeous.
Anyway, that's, that's the house, and it has another three or four pages to it. What, what we're looking at with the property up there on Tom, on the River Vista is overlooking that whole view that we have for downtown and also on the lake, that's what we're looking at. Now, the only thing I would request, if you could do this for me and help me out with this, if. Now, the only thing I would request, if you could do this for me and help me out with this, if, if, and I don't want to say that I want the silo torn down or nothing, but if they would be protected with trees, you know, they're out in front of them silos, and kind of have that, you know, stipulation, it would help me out. I would prefer to see that, if they could do that. Because of the view that we have, you know, the silos, you know, for that type. I know it's industrial, and they have the right to do it. I don't disagree, but I mean, if they can just put some shady of them trees, would help me out a lot.
All right, well, thank you for your comments and allow us to, developer to, to comment.
Just to show, quite well, but we are adding some, like I mentioned before, adding landscaping to this project. There'll be some shrubs and some street trees that'll be out in front of this building. So as time goes, you know, the trees will grow up and, and I venture to guess, even the green silos are being done in a very tasteful way as part of the, the business, so I would, and I don't know if he's more concerned about the existing trees on their side, which, yes, is very beautiful. I'm hoping that, you know, it'd be nice if that doesn't go away, but, yeah, we're adding landscaping, so it should be...
Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing none, I believe you have answered the questions and concerns, so unless you have anything else to add?
No.
You good?
Lucy, have you any other questions? Yeah, appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. So, Commission, it's your pleasure.
Jackie?
Yes, Greg.
I'm going to make some comments at first, because I'm going to defend sidewalks. I, because I always do. I think the city's right in, in wanting sidewalks everywhere. Just because it's an industrial area doesn't mean that people shouldn't walk there. It might be scary, but the trucks need to slow down. So I support sidewalks. However, it looks silly to put a sidewalk on this particular site. But I have to defend sidewalks because I don't want somebody to stick it to me later. So I would make a motion that we allow them not to put the sidewalks in just in this one case, because there are other alternatives that we have for the trail behind and so forth.
Yeah. Well, can we, can we have a discussion? Because I think several people might want to. I, I agree with Greg, you know, I want to support sidewalks, but it seem, it does seem in this situation to be redundant. I don't think that we should use the excuse that industrial area, because if you look at Court Avenue, that all used to be, not Court Avenue, but we're Martin Luther...
Luther Village?
Well, we're Martin Luther Kenyans now, south of Court.
Oh.
Yeah. I mean, that all used to be industrial, and you don't know what the future's going to hold. So I, I just don't think that's a good argument. But I do think in this situation, it does seem redundant because of the bike trail and everything that is behind it. So I do think that this is an unusual situation, because I do, I too want to support sidewalk. You never know what that area is going to be. And, but I think this is kind of unique, so I wanted to say that.
Anyone else? Yeah, David?
Yeah, I'm going to argue against the redundancy point, because pedestrians go in a straight line. And if you imagine yourself as a pedestrian standing on the corner of where the, the access to the bike trail goes north, and you're asking yourself, am I going to take that bike trail, walk that way, and then go, you know, along the bike trail to the, to where I'm trying to get? You're, you're not. You're going to go straight. I mean, you know, we have sidewalks on both sides of the street because, in, in a lot of, most of Des Moines, because pedestrians don't walk out of their way. So I'm skeptical of the, of the redundancy argument. And, and I think the way that the ordinance works is that when someone redevelops a plot, you have to hold them to it, because when you don't, then, then you don't get a sidewalk there, and then you don't get a sidewalk the next spot, because they say, well, there's no connectivity, there's no, and, and so that's, that's why it's written the way it is. And I, I totally get a, get the sense of the P&amp;Z Commission here, that that's probably not the direction we're going to go. And I'm, I'm fine with that, because I, I'm very excited about the, the project, and, you know, I, I love Confluence, and so that's okay. I'm trying to make the argument that I think sidewalks are useful, and I think you should stick to the ordinance.
Anyone else?
Greg, did you make a motion?
Yes, I...
I did.
Make a motion?
Yes, I did.
I just wanted to ask you a question about your motion. So you would recommend that we not, um, that we do overturn the denial? Waive the required sidewalk. However, there was a suggestion, and this is my question to you, Greg. Do you agree with the suggestion that the balance of the site plan be...
Yes, they have to comply with the rest of...
Okay. So, so the motion would be that the denial is, no, that we are approving the waiver of the five-foot-wide sidewalk along Thomas Beck Road, and the balance of the site plan be in compliance with all administrative review requirements by the city's permit. Okay? Anyone got it? All those in favor, please signify.
So we're striking the first part, right? That's what we're doing? Got it?
Yeah.
Yep.
All of those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Any names? And was there anyone abstaining? No abstentions. All right, thank you very much. That concludes our public hearing items tonight. Mike is... Oh, minutes. Thank you for reminding me. All right, so now we have enough people, I believe, to vote affirmatively on the minutes. All of those in favor of our December 5th?
John?
Do you still make a motion to approve the minutes? Okay? I guess we're starting all good. All right, all those in favor of approving the December 5th P&amp;Z minutes, please signify by raising your hand. Yeah, I think you have enough now. Seven? Okay, thank you. And all those who need to abstain?
Didn't help.
Seven, yeah.
That is? Did you get Will?
Abby?
David?
Michael was there December 5th, sorry.
All of those, oh, no, we're done. Okay, thank you. Mike, any?
Thanks, Jackie, for the treats, the holiday treats. Thanks, Jackie.
Just wanted to wish everybody a great end to the year. This has been an amazing year for the city of Des Moines. We talked about this last year, Jack. I know you talked about sitting up in your office and looking at how much growth. That's continued, but there's been a lot done beyond just what you're seeing on the ground today that's going to impact growth for, for the long term in this city. Getting the zoning ordinance done this year is a major, major thing for the city going forward. It's, it's going to be, it's going to be great for the city, I am convinced. And we're going to see the positive aspects of it as it's building out in this community. So thank you for all of your leadership in getting that code through and on to council so they could consider it, and we can move this city forward. So again, thank you. It's been a great year. Look forward to next year. Thanks.
All right. You, and I just want to report, the nominating committee will present the slate at our January meeting.
And lunch tomorrow, lunch tomorrow is...
I believe that's a Tyler.
What time, what time is a Tyler?
What time, Tyler?